Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We will now ask Mr. Lee Wilkinson to come and lead us in our pledge, and we will all stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening to the board members, Dr. Tucker, and thank you all for tonight, and also thank our audience for being here with us. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Tucker, communications.
Thank you, Chairlady Wade. We want to first, though, give congratulations to our own Chairlady, Ms. Mary Wade, for having received her Level 5 boardsmanship pin last night with the Tennessee School Board Association. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations also to Madison Lauk, who won the state level in the National Association of Insurance Women's SA Contest, and received also a plaque and $100. Madison was a student at Erma Segal in the 5th grade when this award was won, in Ms. Ruby Little's class, but currently Madison attends Segal Middle. Congratulations to the following MCS Hall, City Hall Art winners, and they are listed by grade level, and I'm not sure if any of them are here, and if perchance they are, would they please stand so we can acknowledge their presence also. For kindergarten, Annie Thomas, 1st grade; Cameron Adcock, 2nd grade; Camilla Barzola; and these students attend John Pittard Elementary; 3rd grade, Cora Lupa; 4th grade, Saban Sanders; 5th grade, Alexis Radke; and 6th grade, Siraj El Othman. These students attend Northville Elementary. The best in show winner was Saban Sanders. We want to also express appreciation and thanks to Dr. Bob and Paula Jones for their donation of $2,640 to John Pittard Elementary for the purchase of their math software site license, and for their donation of the Good Citizen tee-shirt for the 10th year. Thank you. Ms. Wade.
We have one consent item. Is there a motion to approve our consent item?
I move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for the approval of our consent item. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Tucker, action items?
Yes, and I will refer this time to Attorney Baker.
The action item you have before you, and I've placed the notice on your desk, is a notice of charges of unprofessional conduct against a teacher, and I need the board to either move to approve or disapprove the notice of charges.
How move, we approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Ms. Ritty, would you call the row?
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Bevlin?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Dr. Tucker, reports and information.
Thank you, and I will defer to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Tonight we have the Fiscal Year '09 Audit Report Presentation. You received on your desk the completed audit report for the Central Office and the Activity Funds. Those are the school-based funds controlled by the principals in each school. Before I introduce the presenter of that report, I'd like to thank publicly Galena Bell, our Finance Manager, and the entire Finance Department for the work that they did in preparing for this audit, and as always, the work they do during the entire school year. Because of their efforts, we are able to have the report that's going to be presented tonight. The presenter, and he's a principal of Crossland Associates, is Mr. Larry Feltz, and the lead auditor on this was Mr. Rich Lockwood, who's also in the audience this evening. Mr. Feltz?
Thank you, Gary. Madam Chairman and members, we're pleased to be here tonight to present our report of the audit of the June 30th, 2009 financial statements. We very much want to give our appreciation to Dr. Tucker, to Gary Anderson, to Galena Bell, and all the members of staff of the Finance Office. They were well-prepared, as usual, and the audit went very well. I'm going to be speaking predominantly from the material in a book entitled "Report to the Members of the School Board." This is our required communication to those charged with governance under generally-accepted auditing standards. I'm not going to go into depth on the financial statements. The June 30th statements, I know, have been vetted fully with the board, but I am prepared to answer questions. I will give an overview of what we perceive to be the major audit issues, and how we address them, and the results, and then the required communications. We have performed an audit of the financial statements of the School Board, or Murfreesboro City Schools, for the year ended June 30th, 2009. We also audited the individual and the combined activity funds of the schools, so we actually issued separate reports on those, and I'll address those briefly. The, our responsibilities under generally-accepted auditing standards are to perform an audit in accordance with those standards, and also under governmental standards, and we have performed those procedures. We evaluated internal controls for the purpose of determining the extent and scope and timing of our audit, not for the purpose of reporting on internal controls, but in the course of that, we also tested controls and we evaluated compliance with the requirements that could have a impact on your major federal programs. Turning to page 2, the result of our compliance procedures and our audit were clean opinions, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses in internal controls, and our audit was performed in accordance with the plan and scope that we presented in advance of the audit. The management is responsible for determining the significant audit policies. Those are outlined in Note 2 to the financial statements. There were no major changes in the accounting policies. We find the policies to be acceptable and appropriate under accounting standards. There were no significant transactions that occurred for which there was not an appropriate basis. Financial statements also, inherent in financial statements are estimates and judgments provided by management. We evaluated those estimates and judgments and determined that there was a sound basis for the decisions that were made and that the judgments were appropriate. We did not encounter any significant difficulties in the performance of the audit. Professional standards require us to accumulate and disclose to you any material misstatements of the financial statements. There were none of those, and the adjustments that were booked in the current year were client adjustments that were made as part of the closing process. There were no disagreements with management in areas of auditing or in accounting decisions or presentation, and we obtained a letter from management outlining their responsibilities for the financial statements, for the disclosures, for the maintaining of appropriate books and records, indicating that they had provided to us all information necessary for us to conduct our audit and to provide this report to you this evening. We did not identify any fraudulent acts during the course of our audit or in the year ended June 30th, 2009 financial statements, and we were not advised of any fraudulent acts within that period by management. We're not aware of any situations where management consulted with other, with other accountants in the form of obtaining a second opinion about accounting or disclosure matters. We generally discuss a number of matters in the planning of our audit on an annual basis, but none of our decisions or outlooks are determinate upon our being selected as The appendix to that report is a copy of what we call the Management Representation Letter, which is signed by Dr. Tucker, by the Board Chair, and by Gary Anderson, the Finance Administrative Services Director. Again, this is a letter that we ask for at the end of each audit that expressly notes the, that management's ownership of the financial statements and the disclosures. As to the actual financial statements themselves, I'll just make a couple of brief comments. On the Activity Funds, there was a slight increase in the number of students, about 65 students. There was a very small increase in revenues into the Activity Funds, around $2,000. Expenditures increased from the prior year by about $193,000. Much of this was because two of the schools that accumulated fairly significant fund balances were asked to spin down the funds and did so appropriately. Expenditures at John Pittard increased as it was in its second year of operations, and you would expect some increases. Erma Segal received and spent about $33,000 in new grants, and Bradley spent about $22,000 more than in the prior year, but it earned about $20,000 more in revenues. The Activity Funds, we visit each of the schools, we look at the controls, we recognize that the Activity Funds have some degree of risk in that there are cash balances, and oftentimes those that are accounting for them are not professional accountants, but overall, we found the controls to be good, the monitoring from the Central Office to be good, and the expenditures for appropriate purposes. From the Murfreesboro City Schools financial statements, the primary financial statements, we noted that net assets increased about 4.6% as a result of operational activities and the paydown of some of the debt on the funded properties, the schools. There were increases in state revenues in the current year. There were increases in property taxes, offset slightly by decreases in sales tax revenues. Property tax receivables and deferred revenues, which represent the taxes that have been levied but are not accessible until the following year, this, this, this current year, were up almost a million dollars, about $900,000. As I mentioned, debt on school facilities decreased about $4 million. The expense increase of about $1,009,000 was planned and budgeted and related to negotiated salary increases and the cost associated with increased student enrollment and the full operations of Pittard. Grant activities were reviewed by us, audited by us, in accordance with A133, the government standards, the single audit requirements. We audited about $1,009,000 in federal expenditures out of about 5.5 million. A133 requires that we look at over 25% of expenditures. We look for compliance with programs. We look like, we look for the appropriate spending, and we had no exceptions or reports in that area. We tested three of the federal programs in the current year. In the state expenditures, they increased about 1.4 million. They went over $29 million in the current year. Madam Chairman and members, that is our report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Are there any questions, Mr. Feltz, mean the board members? Miss Tom?
Early each, early in each school year, we use reserves to cover our operating expenses until the tax revenue starts coming in to replenish that. Do you guys look at, ever make any projections or look at how that's running as compared to, to actual, how close we're getting to exceeding our resources in that regard?
We have not done a formal evaluation. We do look at the reserves and the standpoint of going concern consideration on an annual basis. We recognize that fund balances are an important element of not only providing for future growth and expansion, but to, as you would say, to take care of the times where expenditures are in excess of your revenues until the tax revenues catch up. We were discussing that with Gary a little bit earlier. It's important for everyone to recognize that reserves are not all spendable because there are fairly significant periods of time, half your operating year, that you're expending funds before you begin to collect those tax revenues, and then they become, they don't all come at once. They come in over the next six months. So we do find that the, that the fund balance is appropriate. We have not done a, a review to see how appropriate they are.
Miss Tom?
One more. Sorry. Have, from the preliminary report we got earlier, has your auditor's report letter changed? Are they all?
No, sir. They're all, they're all consistent.
For the benefit of the board, I was taught to read financial statements from the back to the front. You see all the bad stuff in the back.
Well, the, the information in the back's very important. The, the very back are the government programs, which are so critical to, to your performance, and as I indicated, there are no reportable conditions on either the federal or the state programs.
No red flags.
Thank you so much, sir, for your report.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
We have number B, Dr. Tucker.
Thank you. I am truly honored to have with us the Assistant Commissioner from the Department of Education, Dr. Connie Smith, who is over the Division of Accountability and Teaching and Learning. She's here today to share with us the information relative to the state and the report card. And Dr. Smith has driven here on our request, and we're so thankful that she's here, because I know she has a lot of things that are waiting for her when she returns to Nashville, and thank you very much, Dr. Smith, for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Madam Chair, School Board members, Director Tucker, this, I'm delighted to be here. This is my first time to address this board, so thank you for having me. I must tell you that when Dr. Tucker called me, I knew I was going to come, because I've known her and worked with her for about 20 years. So you've selected an excellent interim director. I knew her when she was a principal. I hired her to be an exemplary educator and turn around schools in Hamilton County, which she did, and she's been on our State Council for the Southern Associations of Colleges and Schools. I knew her when she was a councilperson. So she has an eclectic background, so good for you in, in choosing her, so.
Thank you.
And of course, Jessie, her husband, is a good man to have around, too. I would like tonight, the director asked me to talk about the new report card, and I would like to talk about two facets of the card, which are achievement and value-added. So you have a copy, and I think I have a PowerPoint. Hopefully, there is. We could start it. What you see on the, on the report card for 2009 is unusual. This is a snapshot in time. We have reset the baseline from which we will proceed with our new standards. And so, and about two years ago, Governor Bretison encouraged us and directed us to move forward on more rigorous and relevant standards because the U.S. Chamber of Commerce gave the state of Tennessee an F, as in Frank, for truth in advertising. And what they essentially said was that, that our, our standards weren't low, but our cut scores, our definition of proficiency, were low. And so, when we said, for example, that 89% of our students were proficient in elementary reading, when compared with the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAP, we were around about 29%. And so, he, that's unacceptable. And I've wondered, I've thought about this a lot and pondered how we got there. We, we set the baseline, When No Child Left Behind came into place in 2001, 2002, and we based that on the 1998 report card set of achievement and value-added, because that was the goal standard for, for doing that. So we have, from that time, from 2002, because we moved into a new age of assessment, we changed the type of test we had, we had a new set of standards, we had to reset our baseline from which we would proceed in what teachers knew and were able to do. We've done the very same thing this year, because this very school year, our brand-new, more NAP-like standards are being taught in our schools across the state of Tennessee. Now, we have been compared as number 46 previously in the rigor and relevance of our standards, but let me tell you right now, we're number 2 in the nation, right after Massachusetts. And I'm kind of tired of hearing about Massachusetts. So, no offense to anyone from Massachusetts, but our teachers in Tennessee can teach those higher, higher-order, more rigorous standards, and our students can learn, just like those students in, in Massachusetts. So tonight, this report card is comprised, first of all, of a profile of a district. And what this profile looks at, it looks at your per pupil expenditures compared to the state, and you're comparable. It looks at your Saks accredited schools, it looks at the number and the demographics of your students and your teachers. The second page, if we could turn to that one, looks a little bit more, because No Child Left Behind disaggregates or breaks apart the data by race and ethnicity. There are actually nine subgroups for which we are accountable in this state. And you know, Tennessee preempted No Child Left Behind with our own accountability model, and we did this in 1998. We were there together, and we got our own definition of adequate yearly progress and, and how we were going to assess students. But what we were doing, that we didn't really know we were doing, is that we were masking subgroup progress or lack of progress. We looked at the data in the aggregate. And so, people ask me all the time, is this a good law? It is a good law, because it advocates for all kids, and it, it requires us to break apart the data to see if all subgroups are progressing like everybody else. So it's a good thing. You can look at the demographics of the school system. African-American, 25%. Hispanic, about 8.9%, 59.6% white. And you've got limited English proficient population of about 6.7%. About 51% of your students are economically disadvantaged, and Title I identified as 11.1%. Students with disabilities is about 11%, which is about the national average from what you see across the state. On the next slide, if you would, this system is in a high priority status. What that means is that it has failed two consecutive years, K through 8, on one of the 72 variables and one of the nine subgroups, as far as federal benchmarks. And when you fail two consecutive years, you move into a status called system school improvement, or system improvement. But what you did last school year is you did make, as a system, you can see the chart, see all those green pluses? That means you made the federal benchmarks, or you met the federal benchmarks for all of your subgroup. So when a system or school does that, you move into an improving status. And so, congratulations. You've done, you've done well. And what you've got to do is keep up, Dr. Tucker, the good work for this school year, and make the second consecutive year of adequate yearly progress to move off the high priority list. Dr. Bretram, yes?
Question there.
Sure.
Will they, will they have, when we're comparing the, the adequate yearly progress scores for proficiency, Tennessee has raised those scores, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we will be compared on our AYP scores next year to the new proficiency standards. I'm not talking about the curriculum, the rigor in the curriculum, but the proficiency standards.
Right. It really won't be a comparison, because this report card is a one-year snapshot. So you're either going to make it or not, based on this year's performance. What we have to do is we have to reset the, the definition of proficiency. So we're going to give the assessment in the spring, and then this summer, we're going to bring in a group of practitioners, School Board members, business roundtable folk, and they'll talk about what students need to know and be able to do to be proficient. And, but, that's called a bookmarking. This is more than you wanted to know, sorry, but you asked the question. And so, we're, we've asked the U.S. Office of Education to delay our, our assignment of status until about September or October next year, and we haven't received permission, so I'm talking ahead of myself. But that's what we did 10 years ago, okay? When we first started with No Child Left Behind. So in, in ratcheting up the definition of proficiency, you'll have to meet a new benchmark or a new baseline. You're exactly right.
So with our more rigorous standards, we're also going to probably have to have a higher mark in proficiency for our students to get to proficiency level. Should we be looking at students who were in the low proficiency area in AYP to focus on those students also?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. The way you move a school or a system to proficiency is you do that one student at a time. And so what we've suggested, and Dr. Tucker knows as an exemplary educator, you get the name of all your students that are below proficient or right, teetering right there on the edge, even though students that are proficient now, as defined, may have an issue. So you develop a plan, an individual educational plan for every child. So when, at our training with teachers and principals this summer, that's what we've stressed. Be sure that you look at the skills and the knowledges and the new standards, because those are the ones that are going to be assessed. Got a brand-new, we called the, the feds, and said we've got brand-new standards, a brand-new test, a brand-new accountability model, and they said it's daunting. And I said, what'd you say? And they said it's daunting. So we know we're up against it. So if you've made improvement in the past, it will be more difficult, I believe, in the future. We're expecting a dip in achievement.
But what if, what if you have not made an improvement? Is, is it going to be even more difficult?
I wouldn't predict that. I don't know yet. I, we're just saying, across the board, it will be with the higher level, higher expectations, it's going to be more difficult to be proficient across the board. Yes, sir.
So if we had a, a large percentage of students who performed in the lower area of proficiency, those are focused students, right?
Well, we have to, in public education, focus on everybody.
Yes.
That's the dilemma, as you know, as a former principal. So it's, it's very, very tough, but yes, that's where we've got to really focus, a lot of our resources. That's where adequacy and equity comes in. You're exactly right. Let me move on, please, to, the next slide has to do with the academic achievement grades, and I want you to look at the explanation there, which will help you understand that we're restarting. This is a restart of our baseline. And it's a one-year, it's not a three-year average, it's a one-year snapshot that cannot be compared with previous report cards. Don't make that mistake, because this is looking at a B as a B. The best way to compare it is against where the state is. And so, you consistently scored Bs in your 3 through 8 in math, reading, language, and social studies. social studies, and science. But remember, this is a fixed transition point. Now, that sounds contradictory. But we are transitioning into new standards, brand-new accountability model. I don't know what the definition of proficiency is going to be yet. And we don't know what the baseline or cut scores will be, but that will all be determined this summer. If you could, look at the next slide with your writing. And your writing for 5th and 8th grade looks really, really good, consistently, year to year. It's on a six-point scale, you're doing very well, and you've got As. There's no change in a trend, just congratulations. We could teach writing, if we could teach reading like we teach writing in this state, we'd do really well. Now, in mathematics, on the page seven, I want you to pay particular attention to compare always 2008 to 2009, and look at the subgroups. You've got the aggregate, all students, and look at the percent below proficient. There were 7% in the system, in mathematics, in 2008 that were below proficient, and that same 7% in 2009. You see an upward trend, which is a plus. If I had to look, if I was going to rate this, I'd put pluses and minuses. Your plus is on your African-American students, which are moving in a positive direction, because you're reducing the percent below proficient from 13% to 12%. Look at your Hispanic students, 18% in 2008 to 10%. That's a positive trend. Congratulations. Your white students are maintaining, not a positive trend, 4% to 4%. Economically disadvantaged, that is your free and reduced lunch, and those students in poverty, from 13% to 11%. And the one I want to draw your particular attention to is students with disabilities. It's very, across the state, this subgroup, we're having a lot of difficulties, as you all know, with our lack of inclusion in preparing these students to meet the rigorous standards. You have a positive trend from 30% in 2008, you've reduced it to 24%. As well as, I put a big plus by your LEP, your Limited English Proficient, from 22% in 2008 to 14%. So, this is a positive. This is something to get, you know, excited about, because this will lend itself to making adequate yearly progress. Because that means, after you break the data apart, you're moving all subgroups upwards. That's good. Look at your reading and your language and your writing. Now, each one of these subgroups counts a third in the calculations in elementary. So, you've got an issue for all students, from 2008 with 6% below proficient, and you've got a negative pattern, 7% below proficient in '09. African-American students in reading, now remember what we're talking about, reading, language arts, and writing, 11% and still 11% in 2009. For Hispanic students, got a positive trend, 18% to 14%. White students have a negative trend in reading, language arts, and writing, 3% increased to 4%. Economically disadvantaged are maintaining at 12%. And there again, your students with disabilities, 22% reduced to 20%. LEP, 25% to 19. These are positive trends. It's not just in mathematics, it's across the curriculum. And so, that's a good, healthy, healthy sign. So, congratulations. You have, on page nine, you have one school that is a target school this year. And you've had, since 2005, various target patterns for various schools. And we want you to be able to track that and keep that on the radar. Bradley Academy, an arts-integrated school, has moved from good standing to target. And what does target mean? That means, it's not an official status, but it's a heads-up, red flag. And so, they failed one or more of the federal benchmarks with the subgroup, and so that's something to watch. We, by the way, provide assistance to school systems, and I want to recognize Carol Stinson. Aren't you happy you have her?
Mm-hmm.
Can I get an amen?
Yes. Thank you.
She, I worked with her for many, many years. And she is a turnaround principal, a turnaround system person, and has a wealth of information, and is fabulous to work with. And we give her to you, so you can thank me later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. All right. Let's talk about value added, okay? Value added is the second dimension in looking at our Tennessee longitudinal database. What does that mean? That means, since 1992, we can track student progress, individual student progress, in five content areas, plus at the high school, which is predictive value added. We've got something in this state that nobody else has. And so, I'm very, very proud of that. And it's one of the most interesting aspects of working with accountability, because achievement can tell you a snapshot in time of what that student knows and is able to do at that particular moment, on that particular test, that particular day. But now, value added shows the impact of those in-school variables on what that student knows from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year. So, this is important to us, as administrators, in looking at, are you closing the gap? Are you adding value to those students that you have for that 6.5 hours a day? And it's a fabulous indicator. A lot of people don't understand it, but just think of it as a yardstick. Like, you measure student height, you know, when they're growing up? And sometimes, they really have a gain and grow, and sometimes, they don't. So, it's a red flag when they don't. And I want to talk about your red flags tonight. This, again, is a non-comparable piece of information to previous years. Do not make the mistake of trying to compare these Cs to last year, because as we did with achievement, we've also reset or restarted the baseline for value added. So, this is the baseline year, because this year, we've moved to the new standards. This report card reflects last year's achievement. Value added is based on achievement scores from the beginning of, the end of last school year to this year. Sir, you have a burning question. You love this, I can tell.
Yes, I'm really into the data and, of course, value added. But now, I know these are three-year averages also, so our grades or our mean game in, say, math, is an average of our last three years?
No. This is a single year. It's a value added, you are correct. Technically, you're correct. It's always a three-year average for teacher effect. But for this particular year, they looked at one year of achievement. So, this is derived, not on a three-year average, because it's, remember, it's non-comparable. So, this is last year's achievement test, calculated, as they do for value added. And see, this is going to impact teacher effect. You know, Ms. Duggan, teacher effect is the measure of the teacher's impact on student learning. And that's always a three-year average. But this one, if you'll read the note there, be sure to read that note.
And I did read the note, but when I looked on the website before, you know, when we were able to go in and look at it, before these were published, and calculated our scores for our system, I got these calculations.
Good.
See, they're, I got them by taking our 2007, 2008, 2009 value-added scores, adding those together, and then dividing by three, like we've calculated.
Okay. Don't make a mistake, though. What I'm telling you is accurate. This is based on a one-year calculation. From this point forward, they're going to take a one-year, next year, this current school year will be the two years. So, you may have, if you've done calculations on value added, which is, which they use a statistical formula, which is, you know, multivariate regression analysis, you're doing better than I am. But I'm telling you, for this right here, this C, and by the way, this C across the board is a maintenance. It's not a close-the-gap variable.
What's this?
If you're looking at changing your Bs to As, you need As and Bs here, okay? So, this is an area for growth. But I appreciate what you're saying. I'm just telling you, as a person who, this is in my shop, this is based on one year.
Okay. Well, I had just calculated, using the three years, like, from the report card on the website. So, again, these were the calculations I came up with. Now, did you all change the grade letter ranges?
Yes, we did.
So, a negative 0.5 last year would have been a D, right?
Well, I think it was. It's a whole new legend. It's a whole new grade scale this year. And don't go back to last year's and try to compare them, because they've restarted.
Right.
Okay? So, what we've got here, zero is the growth standard. It used to be 100%. You know, remember, if you had one year of growth, you had 100%. But what this is, is you're looking at zero. So, the way to look at this, remember, is look at this against the state. And what you've got is math is an area of need. Now, this is the way to look at it. Look at your math and look at your science, and those are focal areas, those are focus areas for moving kids forward, because either, and what this reflects, it can reflect teacher content knowledge, it can reflect whatever textbook you're using, or materials may not be aligned with the assessment, which is what I predict. If you have a textbook adoption that was adopted before last year, you probably have a textbook that is not teaching the standards that we're going to be expecting, because in looking at the standards, what you used to teach in the third grade is going to now probably be taught at the second grade, because we've moved things up so high. Also, in mathematics, in the middle grades, we are teaching pre-algebra in the sixth and algebra in the seventh and eighth grade, where we used to teach it in ninth grade. So, think about your textbook adoptions and those kinds of things. You may have some dated materials that aren't aligned with the new standards. What value added, when I see a pattern like this, it's either got to be a professional development issue around the new standards, or it's got to be the resources or materials that they're using, or it could be organization of the school day. How long are you teaching mathematics? And what are you emphasizing? And are you departmentalized? You know, are you team teaching? Do you integrate this across the curriculum? So, you look strong in reading and language arts and social studies. But if I, as superintendent, was looking at this, I would look at the math area, and I'd look at the science area, and you're probably way ahead of me.
Those are the data discussions that I've been having with principals.
Okay.
Those are the data discussions, though.
Didn't need me to come tonight, but this is, this is, we have not had this conversation. Yes, Dr. Edgers?
You know, since you're saying this is a snapshot in time, so, you know, we've had, this is the first time we've had over 50% free and reduced lunch. You know, it was like 31% when I got on the board, and we're seeing, you know, a change. So, in the past, you know, you're looking at the three years, and you're just following the same children through those three years?
They do have pre-post-test, right.
So, is that what we're doing this year, or are we just?
They just took a snapshot and did some calculations
Okay, so this is a snapshot.
Based on one test score, one year.
Okay.
See, every year, they, it was based on last year's, last school year's spring test against the previous year's spring test. And so, it's just, it's a one calculation, but it's always pre-post-test. You're right. But this figure reflects last year's value added in 2008, okay?
Okay. And now, the, and basically, we did probably what the rest of the state did, more or less. That's sort of how you, I mean, similar?
Well, no, it varied. It varied. We had some real dips across the state, where some systems had made As and Bs, and they were making Cs and Bs. And so, it varied with the system. It was hard to predict it. The calculations were made, and it depends on the numbers, depends on subgroup composition sometime. And there are all those multivariate kinds of things they figure into that calculation. But you cannot take this C and compare it to last year's C, or this C. Just look at it against where the state is. And what I can see here is you've got a math issue and a science issue.
So, for the state, you basically said that zero was average?
Yeah. Zero represents one year's growth. It's not detectably different than what was expected, is what we look at.
Okay. Now, did you expect more this year?
Did I, do we expect?
Okay. You know, you're raising the standards, right?
Right.
So, did you expect more progress in a year this time?
No. That'll be a statistical calculation. What they're expecting is a change in what proficient is, based on what was taught last year to what's going to be taught this year. So, what we are expecting is an achievement and a value-added dip across the state. And in fact, I'm worried about, for accountability reasons, you know, having a lot of schools on the list as failing AYP, because if we were 29% proficient previously, based on the old standards, and we raise our standards, even though we're going to recalculate the baseline, you've got to go from here to here to be proficient. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question, and I don't know if it can be answered.
Really?
But I'm doing the best I can with it.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to get an idea of, how did you set what the growth standard is? Was it the same as what it has been?
No.
Or were you making the standard higher?
The standard's higher.
Okay. So, the growth that you wanted to have in a year, if you hit the 50th percentile, you had the zero, which means just what you'd expect, that's more than what you would have expected last year?
You can't, I really can't discuss this year to last year. And I'm not, if you put it on percentiles, a normal curve and all that, it's not comparable. You've got to look at this year, and from this year, the new standards, to what's going to take place this spring. Okay? And let me say this. We have a contractor, we have a contractor that does all these calculations. I don't do those, as you've noticed. But we do, we do take those, and they are statistically proven to be. So, they, I know how they recalibrate it, is what they call it, the baselines. But it's very technical, and I'll be glad to let you talk to them, okay?
We had, Mr. Hopper has a question.
Sure, Madam Chair.
Phillips and then Dr. Budtram.
I think ever since I've seen the value-added scores and these type of things for the last five or six years, statewide, math and science scores seem to be the lowest. And I frankly have wondered, you mentioned the books and that type of thing we're using might be up to date, but this has been going on for years. And I really was just wondering, or in trying to think of why that's perhaps the case, I'm wondering if it was that the elementary teachers that went into that career just didn't have the inclination or interest in math and science, and if that just wasn't their bag, as they used to say. And if they were interested in math, they'd probably be working for these accounting guys back here, making twice the pay. But is that perhaps some of the statewide problem?
Mr. Hopper, that's a great, great point. We've been licensed K-8 and 1-8. And in looking at the training and the preparation that these teachers have had, they've had one math course, generally. And it's a methodology course. And so, one of our fears with the brand-new standards is we have previously licensed teachers who are out there, have had one math course, and they are going to be teaching in 6th through 8th, pre-algebra and algebra. So, that's why we were frantic about getting the training out this summer on the content, how to teach algebra as a 6th-grade teacher and a 7th-grade teacher. So, yeah, your point is well-taken. That's probably the det- That's probably the determinant, one of the most important determining variables. When I said teacher content knowledge, that's what I'm talking about.
Now, would you not then, if you're going to make all these people math experts in one summer, are you going to have to hire a different group, or to use a different group to make them science experts in one summer?
Well, we worked on that, too. We worked on science, math, English, language arts, and reading this summer. So, we did have content specialty institutes around that. Now, is that going to fix the problem? No. But we're trying to be, you know, proactive in not putting every student below proficient. So, that's one way to do it. Good point.
Ms. Phillips?
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. The first one is bouncing off of Mr. Hoppers, and that is, is the state working with the teacher colleges? Of course, we have a wonderful teacher college here, right here with MTSU, to impact the sort of education that the teachers are getting, so that they can be more effective.
What a great point. Yes, we are. We're working particularly with Board of Regent Schools on the, it's called Teacher Quality Initiative. And I've been a member of that for three and a half years. And what we're doing is looking at revising the preparation of teachers. And that is being proposed, and we are going to work on paying with federal funds mentors, so that you, teachers, prospective teachers can have a residency in a real-life school setting. And what we've talked about in the content knowledge is, we want teachers to know how to teach reading and mathematics and science. And that's really what we want. And we said, stay away from the philosophy of education, the history of education, all those wonderful foundation courses. I said that myself. So, I believe we've had a voice with that. And so, feeling really, really good about the future of teachers, but we'll see. It's tough to change culture. And we've done this, this particular way for, I have for 34 years. So, we've got to have a little time to acclimate, but there are, the higher edges is our partner in all of this. So, it's a good news. Your institution has been a great partner. In fact, the satellite delivery of the content institutes, specialty institutes, was done right here at MTSU. Fabulous. Constance, yes. May I, another question?
I did. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It'll be very quick.
Go ahead.
Earlier, you referenced that, looking at this data here, the focal areas, we're moving the kids forwards, our math and science, and that you suspected that possibly our textbook adaption, adoption, you know, perhaps we have not adopted a textbook that's teaching these new standards. What makes you think that's a possibility? Why do you go that direction?
I went to the textbook, the textbook commission's in my shop.
Ah.
And so, I went and looked at all the adoptions, and I looked at grade four mathematics, I looked at grade five mathematics in the current adoptions, and they're not across-the-board aligned with what we are expecting this school year. So, if my primary mission in life as a teacher is to cover the textbook, and I do that, because I'm honor-bound to do that, and my textbook is not aligned to our new standards, we're making, we're making a big mistake. So, I've said that to 20,000, we've trained 20,000 educators from last year to this year. And so, we've said that everywhere.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Dr. Budtram, you had a question?
Yes. Couple of things. First of all, Dr. Smith, I wanted to make the general public aware that when we look at these report cards and the snapshots, that even though we're a K6 system, these snapshots are really reflective of our third through sixth-grade students in achievement, and of course, just fourth through sixth-grade students in value-added, and probably even less than the total number of those fourth through sixth graders, if you look at the calculation for value-added. So, just for the general public's knowledge, this is a score that's representative of half of our school system, basically, or a little less than half, but it's given, the grade is given to our whole school system.
Could I talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Could I go to the next page and say something about fourth grade? Let me talk a little bit about that. Really, Dr. Budtram is correct in that value-added is a measure of test retest from third to fourth grade. But what we do is put out a cautionary tale on that one, in that that measure of value-added is reflective of the cumulative knowledge from student learning in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. So, all of that is held responsible for contributing to the value-added, because really, in my experience, K3-3 will make or break a child. I mean, you're either going to read or not there. And so, that fourth grade, he is exactly right, score, and I'm going to talk about your fourth grade issue, okay? If that's all right? I'd like to be specific, because you see information, those Cs are in the aggregate. They're in the aggregate. But I want to talk about how you break that down just a moment, okay? And then, I'm going to try to answer your question, if I haven't already. Look on page 11. You see your math is in a declining fourth-grade pattern. Major fourth-grade issue. Now, that is not just a fourth-grade problem, going back to our point together. It is reflective of the math learning and knowledges and skills in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, that contributes to what you get in fourth grade. So, as a principal, you hold all teachers responsible for that value-added. So, there is a math, there is a math fourth-grade issue that could be exacerbated by what's going on in K1, 2, and 3. Just be aware of that, or not going on. You've got an issue, but it's improving. But you had such a bad year in '06, '07, in fifth grade, but you've got an improving pattern in fifth grade. And when we see this, it's either a new textbook adoption, a new way of teaching math, or something going on, a reorganization maybe, team teaching, spending more time, 90 minutes a day. All of that contributes to a positive increase. In sixth grade, I'd like to tell you that you have a great pattern of improvement. And sixth grade is tough. So, the fifth and sixth grade are making up for issues in K through 4. But it's, as a superintendent, I'll be looking at mathematics, specifically, K1, 2, 3, 4. And look from, look at what's going on with the fifth and sixth grade. I'll tell you what I think, is some collaboration or something. There's some talking between and among grades on what's going on, looking at prerequisite skill-building, I bet you, when we see a pattern like that. If I might talk about reading and language arts just a minute, I know you're going to probably get the hook and tie me out, but I'm going to finish this. And you're, again, I want you to look at this, fourth grade, in reading and language arts. You have a declining pattern that is reflective of a K3 influence. So, please don't hold harmless those contributing grades. Everybody has to work together. This is a K4 issue. You have a great improvement in the fifth grade and a great improvement in the sixth grade. So, when you see this in both math and reading and language arts, you need to look at what's going on in the fifth to the sixth grade, and look at the K through 4 patterns to determine, you know, where is the mismatch? So, it looks clinically at the teaching and learning process. That's what we've got to look at. That's why we do the report card. We have to get down to the grade-specific, content-specific, to see what is adding value to what kids previously knew and what is not. And so, you can get these red flags, and from there, you do your system improvement plan. And that's the way we diagnose it. Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you ready to field Dr.?
I thought I fielded it.
I was going to ask.
If I didn't field it, that's about what I've got, Dr. Budtram.
Yeah. No, you answered that question. The other comment was going to be on the growth standard for Dr. Andrews. I know that's really difficult to understand sometimes, when you're looking at the normal curve equivalence for children. So, really, that's just an increase in NCE for each child, and averaged for the whole school and class, and then that gives you your growth standard, correct?
That's a great, that's a great way to put that.
Okay.
So, that hasn't changed, then? My question was, had that changed? The way you calculated that, had it changed from what we did two years ago to what we're doing now?
The calculations are the same. The standards are different. I misheard you.
Okay.
The expectations and standards are the different variable. The calculations, they're using the same calculation they've always used.
So, the, what you expect in one year has not changed?
No, I wouldn't say that, because this, what we expect students to know and be able to do has changed. And that's what you're measuring.
Okay.
So, that has changed. Not meaning to be obtuse, but that's really, it's apples and oranges. You're looking at the standards, and you've got to measure what students know on these new standards, which is different from these other standards, but the way they calculate it's the same. Is that better? Is that better? Okay. All righty. Let's move forward. Sir? Mr. Campbell?
Dr. Nixon came before this board back, when?
It's October.
October. And told us that the standards were going to change, and told us of the problems in the standards and the cut points and percentages and that sort of thing, and that Tennessee was going to go to the higher standards and the higher cut scores. Okay?
He told you the truth.
That's right.
He's absolutely telling the truth. And a good man at that.
I agree. Looking at the value-added, and I don't know whether everybody understands, but if you take, let's look at, for example, value-added math. So, you take the fourth grade that are the negative 2. Then you don't look in 2007 and '08 at the fourth grade particularly, as much as you would look at the fifth grade in 2007 and '08, and see the progress that has been made from a negative 2 to a positive 1.3? And then follow that same group in the sixth grade?
Oh, you're, that's very good.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what's happening.
So, you're following a cohort, aren't you? That's exactly what.
You're following a group of students.
Yes, sir.
So, whether or not that is, just because they're low in 2006 and '07 in fourth grade, and they increased the point to a negative .6 in 2007 and '08, does not mean that it's not the same students that have made that progress or has regressed at all.
Right. It's showing that those fourth-grade students that didn't make progress, once they got to the fifth grade, something's going on in the fifth grade and the sixth grade. That's wonderful. My point is, you need to look at the fourth grade across the board to see. Now, you and I are speaking the same language.
And that could be because of textbook. It could be because of standards, or it could be because the teacher is not doing what the textbook shows. Or perhaps, when we have the new standards and the current textbook that we have doesn't get into all of those standards, I would hope that the teacher would have the opportunity to divert from that textbook and teach those standards, because all they've got to do is go to the website, and they can find out the standards and the type of questions that are going to be asked, and how many. Correct?
Perfect.
Thank you.
We even put it on a flash drive.
Yes, ma'am. I know that.
And gave it to them. Well, I don't need to say anymore. That is, that's beautifully put. That is exactly the way to look at this. Let me finish, let me finish with social studies. Going, looking at what's going on in the fourth grade is a positive trend. You have an interesting fifth grade, up and down, kind of a T-P trend. And you have the same thing with improvement in the sixth grade. So, social studies is an interesting pattern from year to year. Some people say that's non-predictive, but you really need to, that would be a challenge to look at your social studies. In your science, I want you to look at your science. In 2006, 2007 through 2007, 2008, good things were going on in science in the fourth grade. Excellent gains and growth was going on in the fourth grade. Something has happened between that point that needs to be investigated around 2008, 2009, which was last year. And so, we need to see, do we have a new adoption? Did something happen? What's going on there? Also, in the fifth grade, you need to investigate what's going on there, and you have a positive sixth-grade science trend. So, I don't know, I mean, I just look at the data, and I know something positive or negative is happening, but it gives you a red flag to look for as the leader of the school system around what specifically to investigate. So, see, this is a diagnostic, too. The reason we like value-added is it's diagnostic. Very, very good, too. I'm going to quickly go through what school improvement 1 means. And if you want some interesting bedtime reading, you'll go to the Tennessee Code Annotated, 49-1-601. And we have our law, our state law, aligned with the federal, No Child Left Behind. It shows you what, when I go to Dr. Nixon's State Board of Education, and I work together very closely with the schools that are on the high-priority list, and we study the schools and the system. So, we've got systems, high priority in the state, we have four in the state. And they're all in improving status, which is good news. We have 144 schools that are high priority. We have 199 schools that are target, that means they failed for the first time, and we have 13 target systems. Now, what you want to do is continue to make your improvement and come off, and come off the list, but if you don't, you would move into school improvement 2. And you can see that what the codes, the code, everything I do is statutorily driven. And so, I am directed on speaking to school boards in particular status, and I don't speak to school boards about the status generally until corrective action, and then we talk about sanctions and directives. And so, and when they're in corrective action and beyond. And we have a school system in corrective action and one in restructuring in the state. Madam Chair, thank you very much for the time. Excellent questions. Very well thought-through board. Very nicely.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Ms. Hopper?
I don't have a question. I'd just like to compliment you.
Thank you.
I don't know how long this stuff's been going on, the value-added, and, but you've provided the best information that I've, I've seen and heard in years.
Thank you.
It is, matter of fact, at the Tennessee School Board Convention this weekend, they were complaining about the state, about educational test and how complicated, and that nobody understood them and all that. So, I hope you will speak at that next year and help other school boards understand this as, and you present this to them as well as you presented it to us.
Thank you very much. I feel like I dropped the ball on a couple of things, but I felt really good about it, and thank you very much for that. I don't get many compliments in my job.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. We appreciate your being here, and we appreciate you sharing information regarding our status, as well as looking at it in comparison with the state, which is what we're doing this year. Thank you again. And I'd like to ask for Ms. Kaminsky to come forward, please, and give further information regarding our system. And as you were speaking, Mr. Hopper, about the explanation, that's why I asked Dr. Smith to come, because I knew she, she can, she can wrap her arms around the information, and she can learn to love the NCEs. That's her term. I was just using what she sometimes says. But we have to wrap our arms around the data and learn to love those NCEs. Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky.
I'm going to present a lot of what Dr. Smith has presented, but I'll just kind of go through it as quickly as I can. Let's start with the first slide. Okay. I'm pleased to present to you our 2009 district report card information. And you're going to notice that I revised and updated the presentation, which is at your table. As Dr. Smith noted, there are two major changes that have been implemented in the calculation of the report card scores. First, the baseline year for comparing student achievement has been reset using 2009 test scores. And secondly, a new grade scale has been developed. What does this mean for Murfreesboro City schools? The baseline, it provides a fixed transition point, and therefore, 2009 scores and all grades connected with these scores are considered as our new baseline. connected with these scores are considered as our new baseline. This change prohibits comparisons to previous year's data for reporting, including state, district, and school level grades. So as Dr. Smith said, for the 2009 year, the most appropriate comparison is that, is to that of the state level data. So these are our academic achievement letter grades. Murfreesboro City Schools has above-average student academic achievement scores and our achievement scores are consistently above state scores. Writing scores are considered exemplary. Slide two, this chart details the academic achievement performance of each of our individual schools in our district, in each subject area, in comparison with district and state performance levels. Six of our schools met or exceeded the state's performance level in reading, language arts, and five of our schools met or exceeded the state's performance in mathematics. On average, we are above the state in science and social studies regarding achievement data. All right. Slides three through five demonstrate, the next three slides demonstrate that the district met adequate yearly progress in all subgroup areas in reading and mathematics, which are our two AYP-able subjects, and that all grade levels performed above the state in every subject area and grade level. While the district's status remains high priority, we are moving off the list, as Dr. Smith discussed, based on our subgroup performance in math and reading. And our achievement results and scores are the scores that are used to determine the status of the district. So achievement determines our status.
Question?
Yes.
What was the benchmark for math?
The benchmark for math, this, this past spring, 2009, 86% passing rate, and it will remain the same in the spring. The benchmarks will remain the same this spring. However, the number of questions and the rigor on, of the actual test questions will increase. So the children will have to answer more questions correctly, from what we're understanding, and the level of difficulty of those questions will increase as well. Okay. The next slide shows our district value-added performance, which Dr. Smith discussed. Value-added measures a student's progress within a grade and subject area demonstrating the influence of in-school factors on the student's performance. This information is meant to be used by educators as an instructional tool for meeting the needs of all of our students. The tool is designed to assist educators with implementing instruction based on common strengths and needs. The information should be used to address the needs of all our students, as our mission says, assuring academic and personal success for each child. The system's value-added scores of C in all areas is consistent with the performance noted at the state level. Although there are some variances in math and science, the numerical scores are considered negligible at this point. However, that does not mean that we don't look at those areas and really, really examine grade level by grade level and in subject area, the patterns that Dr. Smith noted and put action steps into place, which, which we worked very hard to do. Okay. So I'll just, as an overview, Murfreesboro City Schools has an above-average student academic achievement scores. Achievement scores are consistently above the state scores and writing scores are considered exemplary. Four schools earned all As and Bs in the area of achievement. Murfreesboro City Schools has maintained the state growth standard in all areas. Value-added growth in reading, language arts, and social studies maintained the state mean gain and all subgroups made adequate yearly progress on the 2009 TCAP. Questions?
Are there any questions, board members?
Are teachers given the opportunity, Ms. Kaminsky, to divert away from the textbook and whatever if they're trying to meet those, the new standards and they're not in the old textbook?
Absolutely.
Is that?
We've run, in fact, starting right at the beginning of this year, we ran math workshops based on the new standards, rolled out practical activities. We've handed out the flash drive that Dr. Smith talked about and we encourage it. Actually, what we say as we work with the teachers throughout the system is, we present a variety of materials that are available to them and we say, "Look at your standards and then look back to your materials and match your standards to your materials. Align your standards to the materials that you have so that you can meet, meet the standards."
Are they given the website that they can go to to get the information on testing, on questions and the number of questions and the categories and all?
Yes, sir. They've been given, as a matter of fact, we just distributed out the new test samples, but we, before we had the new test sample questions, we distributed NAPE, NAPE-type, you know, NAPE has questions online as well. So in order to sort of get people familiar with the NAPE-type questions, which is the way our state is going to more of a NAPE-type questioning on the new TCAP, we provided that to our building principals and teachers. And of course, we have just employed this year a system-wide math coach who travels from building to building.
Okay, ma'am. Let me go back a minute. You provided that to principals and teachers or to principals?
Both. Both.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips?
I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate you and your staff for the progress that Dr. Smith pointed out to us that we're making and also Ms. Van Trees on those students with disabilities. I mean, these, these are things that are worthy of note and I wanna thank you and your staff and the teachers in the classroom. Of course, we've got some areas where we can work on and we're going to work on those. And so I just wanted to, to let you know you're appreciated.
Well, I thank you. I must say that the teachers in the system are the ones who deserve the credit. We consider ourselves in the instructional department to be support for the folks out in the field and they really are in the trenches where the rubber meets the road. And so we're working very hard to help support the changes that are taking place throughout the state. And the changes are, as Dr. Smith said, they're, they're opportunities for us and can, can feel daunting at times. They're, I mean, they're extensive, so, you know, it's, and it's pretty fast for a rollout. But we're, we're working together and we have amazing dedicated professionals working out there with our children.
Ms. Duggan?
How much information have the teachers been given about recalibration of the scores? Because I know those teachers who do receive value-added, there've been a lot of questions and I just wondered if they have been, not really trained, but if they've been given, you know, an explanation or some insight into the recalibration?
We've talked about the adjustment of the baseline. I must say, I did not roll them through that extensive regression analysis PowerPoint that we were handed. But, but we do, we do and we have talked about the change in the baseline data.
And that's been done with teachers in each building level?
It's been done with principals at this point and we did it at principals' retreat and we've rolled it out through our TCSPP committee, through our, which is our strategic planning, district-wide strategic planning committee, and there's representation at each of our buildings, so. Thank you.
Dr. Buttrum, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question, follow-up to Mr. Campbell's question about the, the math instruction. Is that true in every subject area? If a teacher has different teaching strategies or styles, they can go outside of their textbook?
Yes, sir.
To?
There is.
And that can be done in every subject?
We, we work very hard to provide, as you know, the championship playbook, which are, are the, the standards, the revised standards, and to work through that and give the teachers tools to meet those standards, a variety of different teaching tools to meet those standards.
But they're not, I mean, they do not have to teach from the textbook?
I, there, we've never said there's one set of materials you have to teach from. We, I think in this system, one of the things we do exceptionally well is to provide our teachers with a variety of materials.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Ms. Kaminsky?
One, one, I'd like to make one comment. You all made a tremendous effort to make sure that all of the groups made progress. And, you know, one, one of the things that can happen is that, you know, you, you work, you're working really hard to do that and it's hard to just hit all the areas every year, every time. And, and one thing that I, I noticed during Dr. Smith's presentation is that, okay, so these grades are doing great on this and these grades are doing great on that. So, you know, our teachers have a huge challenge to help the children in every area and make extra gains in all the areas and make sure that all, you know, all the students who are special ed and the ELL students and, you know, you've really, I think you've done, and the teachers have done a lot more than just what this shows. I mean, they, they really, they've brought the, that brought the entire system out of the target status, which is amazing. And then, you know, they've put their heart and souls into hard work with each one of these, these children and it sounds like you've got a plan for what we're gonna do over the next year, too, to, to help us meet these even higher standards. And I know, I know the teachers here, you probably appreciate a lot more than, than any of the rest of us can what kind of a challenge that's gonna be to, to go from what used to be a usual second grade standard to the new third grade standard. And that, that's going to really be a challenge for our teachers, but if anybody's up to it, I think they are.
They are, and I think you can relate to it as well because we are using, really, we did borrow from the medical field in our attempt to really, really try to meet the needs of every single student. And we do that through, through the use of the data, through diagnosing each individual student and then working through a series of remedial strategies at, at each level and looking carefully at any of those students who hit our at-risk list. And then, if you walk into our buildings, you'll see collaboration and talking, not only at the same grade level, but articulation between maybe a first-grade teacher and a third-grade teacher. Articulation between our preschool staff and our kindergarten staff. Just yesterday at our, was it yesterday or this morning, at our principal-staff meeting, Ms. Walker, our preschool supervisor, talked about integrating strategies that the teachers in the kindergarten had recommended to our preschool teachers. So Dr. Smith is absolutely right when she says those early grades are the foundation. That's, we, we're all important. Every single teacher, every single student contributes to our status as a system. So that's our, you know, and every child, every child helps us and is, and is important. You know, to assure academic and personal success for each child is our mission and that's no mistake.
Ms. Hopper?
I'd just like to compliment you on the improvement that these statistics show in the grades and the progress that we're making. And I know it's, you have a very tough job and I certainly appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
I appreciate, I appreciate the ability to serve here. I really enjoy my job. I really love the children. I really love the people I work with and the, the challenge of the job, I really do. So I appreciate it.
Ms. Duggan?
I know that we hired an additional RTI person this year.
Yes.
However, within each building, in particular our schools, they have a higher number of students who qualify for Tier Two and Tier Three. Exactly, and you may not know these numbers off the top of your head, but exactly how many people do we have in our buildings to assist our teachers to give those students the additional time? Because I know the current evidence that we have in education is that these kids need additional time, not a retention, but additional time this school year, this week, you know, this month, this school year. And that needs to be delivered on a daily basis. So do we have individuals in our schools that are doing a Tier Two or Tier Three in addition to our classroom teachers?
Yes. Yes, we do. But I cannot give you that individual, that, that number right off the top of my head, but I can look it up for you and get it to you. Yes. RTI is a, is a, you know, is a, is an opportunity. We are learning as we are going. We are getting better with response to intervention. We are learning from our teachers and they are bringing a great deal of, of information to us and we're dialoging about what's working best for our students, so. And I really think communication and collaboration is the key to improvement and really, you know, we just had a meeting last week to discuss sort of progress monitoring and how it's going. I, I'm really proud every time I have to take somebody out into a building and, and can show some of the Tier One meetings that are going on and the incredible collaboration that goes on between all of our staff members and, and looking at each of the, you know, each of the individual children and, and all the different things that we're doing to try to help each individual child gain success.
And our math and science coach?
Yes.
If that's what they're being called this year, are they actually in a position where they can go in and model lessons for teachers or are they doing that, actually going into classrooms and teaching lessons and model for our teachers?
Yeah, they do, they do staff development and obviously support and additionally what we call shoulder-to-shoulder coaching. So they travel from one building to the other and, as we call it, embed themselves into the buildings. Of course, when you only have one, one person and you have 12 buildings, it's, it's a little bit of a stretch, so. But, but we're getting there. It's more than we had last year, so.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Oh, I was just going to ask you, for the sake of the folks at home who don't know what an RTI is, and we know, we know it's response to intervention, but could you just give us a quick review for the folks at home?
Yes. Response to intervention is a, is actually a process that we go through in our school system to help children who may need extra assistance that can take place, hopefully in most cases, within the regular classroom setting. So we monitor and benchmark three times a year to determine whether children are considered at risk based on what we call benchmark assessments or, or sort of screeners that we, we dip in and take a look at how our children are doing at each grade level. We develop a list of children who we feel need some extra assistance and it could be in one area or the other, and then we meet together as what we call a multidisciplinary team. So it's a lot of experts who know the child well, who discuss the strengths, weaknesses, the child's learning style. Maybe the child learns better auditorily or visually. And then together, the team comes up with some strategies that can be developed in the classroom. The parent is also brought in at that point so that the parents can help to assist us in this effort. And then we monitor to see whether these interventions or strategies are, are working every couple of weeks. And then if more assistance is needed, we move to what Ms. Duggan calls Tier Two, which is the next level, which might be more individualized help. It varies depending on where the child is having difficulty. And then Tier Three, which is special education. But we try to do what we can to help the child learn without being pulled out from the general education classroom setting as much as possible because research shows us that that's the best way to help children achieve. Thank you.
Dr. Buttrum?
Are, we're using, you said Tier Three is special ed or we not using the five-tier?
We do not use a five-tier model here. We have a three-tier plan, which is state-approved.
Have you looked at the five-tier?
Yes, actually I have and had, had pretty extensive discussions with the RTI folks at the State Department and they, they're very, very pleased with our, our, our plan and feel that five-tier model would not be advisable for us at this point.
And who, who told us that at the state?
Veronica McDonald.
Okay.
All righty. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you again also, Ms. Kaminsky. She's very thorough and systematic in her approach to understanding the data. Also, I'd like to add that I have been having data discussions with principals, scheduling one half hour, one half, one and a half hours to two hours of discussion so that we can look specifically at each school, analyzing the data and looking at where areas of improvement could occur and also looking at our strengths and weaknesses in, in light of what could occur, and also looking at our strengths and weaknesses in, in light of what we could do to, to become better, because we all want to get better. Let's now look at item C, and I will defer to Ms. Baker.
Okay, I have two new board policies before you, for you to review, and I'll bring them back for your approval at the next meeting. I'd like for us to get back in the process of bringing one to the meeting for you, bringing them to one meeting for you to review, and then a second meeting for you to approve. The first policy is BO-41. It's relative, it sets forth the state statute requirements relative to registered sex offenders. And this policy, I thought, is helpful for not only our principals to have a resource to understand the law if they're faced with this issue, but also to make any parents that may possibly fall into this category, make sure they understand what the law is and what our process is. Under the state statute, no registered sex offender whose victim was a minor can come within 1,000 feet of school property. Secondly, no registered sex offender or violent sex offender, period, regardless of who their victim was, can be on school premises where there are children under 18, can sit, stand idly by, whether or not in a vehicle, within 1,000 feet of a school building, or be any, any conveyance owned, leased, or contracted by a school if there are children under 18 there. Now, the reason for this policy is, of course, there is an exception to the statute, if you'll turn the page, for if we have a parent who is a registered sex offender, that parent, under the state statute, may attend a conference or other scheduled event or activity with school officials present, provided they are participating in that conference or school event and activity because their child, because of their child that is in our school. And we've, we've put in place, they can also drop, under the state statute, they may also drop off or pick up their child. And under C, if that parent is coming to the school for a conference or an activity, they must report to the office, and then the principal will have an official of the school take that individual to the appropriate location for the conference or activity that they are there for. Do I have any questions on this statute, on this board policy?
Is that, does the principal keep that information confidential from the staff member that does escort?
They, they will keep the information confidential for the benefit of the child so that the others won't know for the child's benefit.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Only that's the staff that need to know will have that information.
Ms. Wade. Ms. Duggan.
Looking here at part four, I know sometimes parent conferences are held after school Is there a need for us to put something in our policy that would deal with, you know, a conference that might go in at 6:00 o'clock at night? You know, most of the time administrators are in the building, but that's not always the case, because it's difficult. I know, I think the way that we do conferences is an excellent way to do it, but you have that two-week window. Should that be addressed in this policy?
Well, I think what the teacher and the principal, when they know that they have a parent that is in this situation, they should and would make arrangements to ensure those conferences are done at appropriate times so that a principal is in the building when that conference occurs, and they can make those specific arrangements. And I've provided these policies to the principals and, at a principal's meeting, and received their input before bringing them to you.
And they feel comfortable with how this is worded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hopper.
Along that same line, do you routinely, when we, before we adopt policies, review that with staff members or some focus group or something that would be involved?
Yes, anytime I have a policy that the legislation has deemed necessary for the board to adopt, or something that, issue has come up where I think it's necessary to implement a policy, I will present that policy first to the director and be sure that it is shared with the appropriate staff members that can give me their input to help make sure that I'm not drafting something that won't work in reality in the system. So that's why this particular policy was one that I felt the need to make sure I had all the principal's input in this policy. So I provided it to them at a principal's meeting and requested they give me any comments or additional information, and they did give me additional information and changes they thought would help make this policy work in reality in the system.
I was informed recently, we passed a, a policy regarding either email or cell phones or something, and I'll have to go back and figure out what it was, but it turned out from talking with some of the folks that were actually involved, it was counterproductive to what we were trying to do, and so that's why I was hoping we'd always get these passed by the focus group or the ones directly involved before we, the board passes policies that might not be beneficial.
Right. And they've brought that to my attention about the Internet email policy, so they've worked on some revisions, and I'll be bringing that back with their recommended revisions.
But if we could use that on, take that in consideration on other things we, we do in the future.
Yes, definitely.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Baker on this particular board policy change?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
The next new board policy that I'm recommending adoption of is the Educational Records as Evidence Act. And this comes into play when the school system receives a subpoena for a child's educational records. And I've, I felt the need to implement this policy because over the past couple of years, I've run into situations where our schools have received, or our teachers have received subpoenas directly to them that have bypassed central office, bypassed me, until I get a frantic phone call, I got the subpoena, what do I need to do? Well, apparently, a lot of attorneys that don't practice school law frequently don't realize the statute is out there that deals with educational records when they're subpoenaed. And there's a very, very specific way that those records have to be sealed and presented to the court with an affidavit from the records custodian. The legislature deemed it necessary to implement this type of statute in order to limit the amount of time that teachers are taken away from the classroom. And the teacher needs, the legislature's deemed that they need to be in the classroom as opposed to in court testifying during, in the middle of a divorce case. So that's why I think it's a good idea to implement this statute so that all of the staff and principals are aware of the steps they need to take if they do receive a subpoena. I've included attachments of draft form affidavits and form letters to the parents. Anytime we receive a subpoena for students' records, we have to notify the parent that we've received that subpoena unless, for some reason, it is in connection with some sort of a case where we have been told by the court, or the, if it's DCS or whoever, that we cannot notify the parent of that. That would be the only exception. And so I've included these forms for the, the buildings to help expedite this process.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker?
I just, I just have a, have a comment, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
When, when I'm, I'm looking at the, the policy, of course, I've just scanned it. I, I think it might be useful to, just to have a summary or a statement that says to the teachers, okay, if you get, if this happens, this is what you do, this is who you go to immediately. Just make it a little bit, I, I know that doesn't necessarily have to be policy, but it, it seems like it doesn't say all that you told us, and what you told us was just a little bit easier to understand than this. Does, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but...
Yes, and you want me to put a step-by-step approach in it?
Yeah, and, and maybe just address that if, you know, if, if this happens to a teacher, that they, this is what they do, rather than, yeah, just start at the very beginning, I would think that might be useful.
Okay.
And it maybe doesn't need to be in the policy, it might just need to be in the, what Dr. Tucker sends out to the, to the staff about how to handle that. But I would think the teachers who are looking at, looking at policies, they're going to know, well, what do I do? And the principals would want to be able to tell them, okay, this is what you do, and then they can handle all the real technical stuff.
Well, in this policy also, I took to the principals at the meeting, the principals will be deemed our custodian of records at each building. So if you look in, under section one, it does say, when an employee of Murfreesboro City Schools receives a subpoena, the employee should immediately contact. And I'm going to revise that to include their supervisor and the attorney for the Murfreesboro City School System. And what will happen at that point is the principal will take over responsibility for handling that subpoena.
Okay, and that, that may have been in here, it's a lot, yeah.
And I use the word supervisor as opposed to principal because we will have situations sometimes where we'll receive subpoenas for records handled by Mr. Anderson, records handled by Deborah Savely over transportation. So I use the, the more catch, the catch-all phrase of supervisors as opposed to specifying principals.
And at our, at our previous principal's meeting, as well as the meeting we had today, we mentioned again the need for contact of the legal department of Attorney Baker if perchance anyone receives a subpoena. And in like manner, I will work with Ms. Baker in terms of possibly getting a fact sheet, a fact sheet as to what step one, two, three. But basically, once the teacher has notified the principal, with the principal being the custodian of record, that principal will take over at that point.
And then, of course, you would be informed, too.
Of course, yes, yes, ma'am. All right. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll move now to our next agenda item, and that's the personnel update. Persons completing 90 days. Laura Cantrell, Kathy Farah, Jonathan Fitzpatrick, Hope Jones, and Angela Tramell. That completes the items under the personnel report. And going now to the monthly revenue and expenditure report under tab three. Mr. Anderson, I'll yield to you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. We're at the four-month mark in the financial, 33 and 1/3 percent is the way we look at it. As you can see on the net income, and I'd like to thank Mr. Hopper for bringing up about the fund balance, et cetera, net income is $4 million behind at this time. This is normal, and the reason it's normal is we have collected zero property taxes at this point. No one pays their property taxes before they're due, so there's zero money coming in. When, the question always comes up, how do we fund the expenses we have, then, if we have $4 million negative? And the answer is our fund balance, or the city gives us an advance on their allocation to us. So those are our two ways. Fortunately, we, our fund balance was, was adequate to cover this, but we will be asking the city for, for an advance for next month to make sure we're good to go until the property taxes do start coming in.
Is that something that typically happens, you have to ask the city for an advance, or is that issue because of the economy?
Ever since I've been here, we've asked, asked for an advance, and I think it's been pretty much practice to do that.
At this point in the year, Gary, or has it been earlier or later?
I think last, last year was a month earlier. I think we've, when you see the expenditure side, see, we have been a little more conservative in our expenditures, and we had planned for the reduction in revenues over the year. Right now, when you, when you go to the revenue side, we are $100,000 behind in sales tax collections than we had anticipated, and we kept that number actually lower than what we thought we would, I mean, we kept it lower than what we had hoped it would be anyhow. So we, we were conservative on that. Our revenue collection is at 23% of the year, and again, it's, we're 33 and 1/3 through the year, so that's always behind, but it does get caught up, and then in the spring it goes the other direction, and we're, we're on the positive side. So we do use our fund balance to get us through all these tougher times.
We're, we're down $100,000 on sales tax.
So far, through the first four months, yes.
So, four months, so we'd be $300,000 down for the year then.
Potentially. Last year, we were down $600,000 in sales tax, but we had $300,000 more in property tax collections, so that, that helped offset it. So you could see the economy hit bad last year. It doesn't seem to be quite as bad, but part of that's because we didn't anticipate an increase in sales tax collections.
My wife hasn't done her Christmas shopping, so that ought to make up a lot.
I'll mark that down, sir. We'll, we'll make up that budget line next month. On the expenditure side, we're at 30.8% overall. You can see we're a little better than we were last year, at 31.9%, so we're, we're doing well in that area. One of the expenditures that's like, the last one where it says regular capital outlay is over 103%, that's because of the roof that we did. We haven't moved the money from the fund balance to the capital outlay fund, but that's the money that we had paid for that roof, that black fox. But that's the, that's the report on the expenditures and revenues. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and we'll go to the attendance report, and I'll also, at this point, yield to Ms. Anderson.
Do you have the attendance report?
Yeah.
They got it?
I don't know. It came with your report.
No.
It came with your Friday mail.
Yes, it's, I've got it right here.
Okay, on the attendance report, we are four students down from last month, but we are 37 over our budgeted amount. We budgeted 6890, and we're at 6927, and we're 56 students over last year at this time, so it's very good trend for us right now. There's going to be ups and downs on these, so you know, we're, we feel good about where we are right now. Attendance percentage with the H1N1 concern, we are at 95% again, and that's above the state amount. That's a little less than what we were last year at this time, which was 96.6%, but we're still holding our own at 95%, so that's a really good number. Our K through three PTR ratio is 19.05. Our four through six PTR ratio is 20.3, and so those two numbers are, are real good. Our total school ratio of professional licensed people is 13.49 district average. That's counting all professionals in our school. So we, we feel we're doing well on our attendance right now and hope the trend will continue.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Other business?
Ms. Wade.
I'm sorry.
You'd asked that I announce at the close of the meeting the dates and times for the interviews and following special meetings for the rest of the week.
Yes, ma'am, and the three candidates.
Okay. You have a special meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM to interview Dr. Linda A. Gilbert. You have a special meeting scheduled for Friday, November 20th, at 4:00 PM to interview Beth M. Wright. You have another meeting scheduled for Friday, November 20th, at 6:45 PM to interview Dr. Leela A. Bridges. And then the final special meeting for this week is scheduled at 8:00 AM on Saturday, November the 21st, for the board to meet with a consultant to share observations and perceptions of each candidate and select the finalist. A note for the public is that special meeting scheduled for Saturday, November 21st, was originally advertised for 9:00 AM, and it has been moved up to a start time of 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Ms. Wade, I had two items I'd like to bring before the board. One, I mean, one is just real simple. Mr. Anderson graciously acknowledged Ms. Bell and his staff and working on the audit. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your leadership on that as well as our finance director. And also, you know, the TSBA meeting, I just found the parts, certain parts that I attended were so interesting, and I thought that perhaps you all had some classes or clinics that you, that you... you enjoyed. And I was thinking that perhaps if we could present at the next regularly scheduled board meeting in December, a brief report of some of the things that we found interesting or that we might like to bring back to the whole Board. Perhaps Ms. Duggan, Dr. Andrews, anyone else who attended, if they had a moment or two, Dr. Hopper, Ms. Wade?
Could we do it through email, possibly, so we won't have to publicly do it? I mean, if we're just sending out information that we learned or they learned at the TSBA?
I just thought it would be good for the public to know, too, to enjoy it, too. And because some of these ideas may be things that we would want to bring into our system. There were some great ideas out there.
But the ones that aren't, we might not want to share with the public yet.
It's a report on TSBA's annual meeting, that's all it is. And if any of you enjoyed any particular classes and you had a moment or two of something you would like to share, I would be very interested in hearing your observations and your perspective. We don't get a chance very often to share ideas and exchange ideas.
That's a request to put that on the next agenda.
That's what she's saying, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And all of us did not get to a chance to attend the same classes. So it would be refreshing to me, and I'm pretty sure you'll keep it brief, and I can see why the general public would not want to know some things that we picked up out of some of the classes. Keep it brief. I'm worried about, I may get lengthy in my email. But I thought the classes were good. I was impressed with Governor Breterson, and I wanted to pass on to Dr. Tucker and Ms. Harris and the leadership staff. It's something that, if I didn't pick up anything else, in that his presentation was, you have to tell your own story to the newspaper for them to know your story instead of waiting for someone else to tell your story. And I would love for Dr. Tucker and Ms. Harris, with information, and with Ms. Van Triesen the information that Dr. Smith gave, to tell our story.
Yes.
And the elements that we have available to us and to the paper. I wish Chastity had stayed so she could hear. Sometimes it's a good idea to hear the story, and then it's easier to print the story. But since we have our own mechanism, let's tell our own story.
I'll be glad to get with Ms. Harris, and we definitely have a story to tell, and it is a good story, and it's a story about progress in the school system and our children are achieving.
Thank you, Ms. Tom.
I appreciate that. So next month, if you don't mind, if you'll put just a few blurbs, if anybody, if they want to send you an email, send an email out. It may not be anything I want to say, but if somebody has something light that they would like to tell, maybe in a paragraph, that would be good. And the other thing he said was, we need to tell our story at the board meetings. Only way the public's going to know your story, and you should always tell the, you hear a lot of the bad, let's tell some of the good. We have so many great employees working hard to do the best that they can for our children, with our children, and the public needs to know that. They need to, some people are better readers. Everybody doesn't sit up and watch the board meeting, but at least they may read the Internet and they may read the paper. Tell the good things that are going on, no matter how long it gets, let it be long, because the bad will absorb us and overrun us, so let's let the good far outweigh the bad things that they say about the system.
They're good stories that we are hearing every time we have principals' meetings and every time I make visits to schools, and they have some stories that are good for others to hear, as well as to encourage the students that have been participating in those various events.
I agree.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, ma'am.
One comment. I believe next month that Lee Rennick and the BEP will be here, and a check will be presented like they normally do. I would like to request that we let Ms. Rennick have a few extra minutes to share with us about the return on our investment with the BEP. I think that would be very enlightening for all of us on the Board, but also here again for the public to have a little greater insight into that. And I would just like to thank you for, I've heard many very positive comments from teachers today about your time that you spent with the MEA yesterday in honor of National Education Week, in celebration of National Education Week. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to talk to the teachers and to let them see just what a very fine interim director we have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any more data, boys? Before I adjourn, ma'am? Thank you. We now adjourn.